Motion to come back into session.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion second for call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Donald. Yes, Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Item nine is resolution of ordinances. I've made as an approval of resolution number 2017 dash forty-two, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, appointing Taos County DWI Planning Council. This will be presented by Mr. Herbert Valdez, our DWI coordinator. Eric.
Mr. Chairman, board of commissioners, again, I'm up here asking that you can please approve the resolution number 2017 forty-two so that we can continue with our DWI program. Without the DWI Planning Council, it would be impossible for me to take the fund and the program. And that's why I'm up here.
Okay. Pleasure, Commissioner. Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Carry on the discussion, Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Okay, they'll stay right there, Herb. Approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-three, which is a resolution approving DWI team court planning council bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, again, without the bylaws, we don't, we don't know how we run the meetings or anything, so that's why we have the bylaws in place. So again, I'm requesting for approval of the bylaws.
And those bylaws were developed by the Planning Council?
Yes, they were.
Okay. Motion.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion in the second, Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Thanks, Herb.
Thank you.
Next item, item C is approval of resolution twenty seventeen dash forty-five, a resolution certifying county fixed assets annual inventory. Ms. Lee, go ahead.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner. Before you is the task grant resolution number two thousand eighteen forty-five pursuant to NMSA eighteen seventy-eight twelve dash ten. Annual inventories noted of all shotguns and equipment costing five thousand dollars or more. Attached to this resolution are the difference per department that do carry these items by thousand dollars or more, which are capital assets. And we are required for our governing board to approve our resolution based on this annual inventory. That's my.
And you have certified this list?
Yes, I have.
All right. Pleasure, Commissioner. I'll second Mr. Chairman, you make a second discussion, Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten under department matters versus arts and artifacts committee. Item one is discussion decision regarding art committee recommendation to acquire triptych produced by Taos County Adult Detention Center as was presented to the commission by Paul Figueroa at the last meeting. So we would be accepting the program or the result?
Chairman, commissioners, what would we, what we would be accepting would be to purchase the results of the first effort of the program. But that would also be pending approval from legal purchasing and also the possibility that would be purchased on the open market after the fall of arts festival. The goal, I believe, for the program is to encourage the detainees to use their talents. So if it were purchased, if there's a market for it, if it were purchased prior to the county acquiring it after the fall of arts festival, the county could give other things to support the program, purchase materials, ventilation, in-kind services, that kind of stuff. But if it doesn't sell, the arts committee feels it would be a good, I don't know, representation, but a good starting point to encourage our detainees who well may have great artistic talent to make an effort to do something different besides spend time in jail.
Mr. Corb. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and on that note, I can feel probably would be more sustainable of a program if the open market was susceptible to buying it, I mean, especially in future projects. I think the county is open to the idea of purchasing it down the road, but if the detainees that are creating the art know that there's an open market for it, I can feel it would really feed the program a lot stronger. So the request is to see how the market first responds to the piece, and if it doesn't have any buyers as we finish the fall market or the fall arts tour and we get into the winter months, we can maybe back and consider purchasing it a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, nevertheless, I would like to make a motion that we.
Pursue it.
Approve the sale pending approving, approval by legal, pending it does not sell during fall arts. So that, is there anything else that would include in that motion?
Purchasing, just to make sure procurement is followed by.
Okay, so pending approval by legal, pending it does not sell during fall arts, and pending.
Procurement approval.
Procurement approval.
What is the price, Mr. Chairman?
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, we have a motion in second to pursue the program pending proper procurement decision.
And the price, and the price tag, Mr. Chairman? The price tag would be five thousand dollars on my understanding, it's a small amount to go to the arts, but both the necessary materials and goods continue to show the program.
So perhaps my motion should include pending a negotiated price in addition to that.
Do you accept the amendment, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Pending, second, Mr. Chairman.
So we'll vote on the amendment to include negotiated price, Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Blakenhart.
No.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yeah, during discussion, I was just gonna say, I don't, you know, I'm just not in favor of so many contingencies on motion. I don't oppose the idea, just, you know, prefer to take the manager's advice and wait until we see what happens, but there is, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then moving on to, we have a motion in the second on Commissioner O'Donnell's motion as amended and accepted, Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Where are we going on now? Now we're going on the motion, that was for the amendment.
Oh, that was for the amendment, so no.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes. Okay. Item two is request for approval to add Judge Jeff Shannon to fill Bill Wayley's vacated position, Barbara Arnold, her designee, as new district court representative, and request Commissioner O'Donnell fill in for Chairman Fambro. I don't understand this agenda item. What are we requesting? Are they in the same committee? Are they different committees? What is this?
This is for the arts committee, by the resolution, the commission approves the arts members based on letters or.
Mr. Wayley was my appointee and my choice is not Judge Shannon, so I don't know why it's on the agenda.
I didn't, I didn't know we had official appointees. My understanding was it was volunteers that requested to be on the committee, but Judge Shannon had just requested at large to, if there was an opening on the committee, if he could enter the committee. It's still waiting up to the commission, they want to accept his offer to be on the committee, and that's why we did.
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if Mr. Figueroa has the current bylaws and resolutions, which I think states the permission, appoints members, to, for clarity?
The commission approves members, that request.
I thought they were my district.
I don't think so.
That's one, that's one.
Then I'll draw mine.
Mr. Figueroa, did you have the bylaws to clarify this question?
Yes, I do. Resolution twenty fourteen dash thirteen. The review committee shall consist of the following: county manager or his or her designate, one county commissioner, one full-time employee of the district and magistrate courts, not to exceed six appointees by the county commission. The county facilities director or his or her designate shall serve as an ex officio member and as staff to the review committee. Well, I stand corrected, I believe that of those six, each one of us had an appointee, but I'll draw my objection. But I don't, are these all the, this now then goes to district court representative, which, do we have that on the Arts and Art Fact Committee?
Of the supportive commission from district court and previous levels.
Okay, so do I have a motion or any other discussion regarding item two?
Discussion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Vice Chair. So Judge, Judge Jeff Shannon will fill Bill Wayley's position, and Commissioner O'Donnell will fill your position?
If Commissioner Fambro wants to, if Commissioner O'Donnell requested that if Commissioner Fambro, Chairman Fambro was unable to attend meetings, and she could attend if.
She couldn't be my own.
Or Figueroa, basically.
Okay. But I just have an issue on other committees that I'm on, and she shows up, I don't know. I mean, we have our designees for a reason, but.
It's not, like I said, it's still, that's why we're here before the commission, for you guys to decide if you want to continue being a full-time member and, and whether you think or not, that's still we have to, but Commissioner O'Donnell did attend the last meeting and just requested that if she could be your designate, and so it asked her before the commission, so that's why I'm here. She currently is not a board member of the commission, but Arts Committee.
Chairman, Commissioner, if you could just give us an outline of who's currently on the committee, what open spots you have, if you have a quorum, if we can just sort of get an idea of how it's functioning, because there are three members of six you're discussing now, I think, if you help the rest have an understanding of how it's currently.
Currently, Michelle Barre, Susan Porter, Deborah Bealobos, Bill Wayley who's gone, Peter Rose, and.
Up here.
And Paul. And of six members, and then there's the chairman. I've been proxy for the manager since twenty fourteen, and then Mr. Flores on vacation. And the district court, district court is a fairly regular, previously it was Jeanette, and now moved by Barbara Arnold, and her designate being officially, Jeanette has retired.
Pleasure, Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, do you like to take these as separate items? I hear you're saying.
It's one agenda item, it would be all.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve item ten A two as stated. And I would ask that, Mr. Chairman, that I take your place as, not as an alternate, but as the full-time member to that Art and Artifacts Committee.
I have a motion for ten A two as stated in the agenda. If you're not hearing the second, the item will be removed from the agenda. Item three, request approval of new arts committee chair, Mr. Paul Figueroa with assistance of county staff.
Chairman, commissioners, I've been the chair for the arts committee since the committee's inception against the object complex, Mr. Archuleta appointing me as his proxy, it's been, it's been a pleasure to serve. My duties have slowly grown throughout the years, and I still enjoy the committee, but without the administrative staff, I'm in the field quite a bit, and I'm out quite a bit, and so if it has to come straight, Mr. Figueroa has all the territory to be the chair, if he gets some assistance from county staff to meeting scheduling, minutes, taking minutes of the meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. What will continue to be the role of the arts committee at this point?
My role?
No, the committee, committee. A lot has been accomplished.
A lot has been accomplished, part of the process is continue, I think, part of the issues, because I am often in the field so much and involved in so many other projects besides just the arts committee, there has been a little direction lacking. We would like the committee itself, I believe, that has expressed its effort to get more of the local artists as in quilting, quilters, local juvenile, we need to get one donation for the elementary school arts club. Things, pursue more, more art variation, not only just established artists, but local artists, craft people, and to get, get them a place to exhibit and put on.
Within the complex, just the complex, not the old courthouse or other buildings?
Basically, the whole county, I mean, we have photographs, we still have a bunch of photographs that we have framed already, that we're trying to get out to some of the senior centers and community centers that they're up, but like I said, because I've been involved in all the building management and the construction and the ABA, but arts committee, I'm stressed a little bit, so we have been a little bit, not radical, but just have a bit of that organized right now. Let's just talk a little bit about it.
Mr. Corb.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, from management's perspective, we'd also certainly appreciate the assistance from the Arts and Artifacts Committee, as Mr. Sanchez said, countywide. We have community centers, senior centers, we would really love to outfit all of those county buildings with art, but you know, it's great to have that advice from the committee to tell us the best approach out there. So I see the role, I'm going beyond just the complex, although the complex still has some empty walls as well, and I think the committee is very beneficial to giving us that direction. Thank you.
Commissioner Valdez.
It just says with county staff assistance, does that mean, so you won't be there anymore? Will there be anybody taking place from staff, or will it just be Chairman Fambro, the connection?
At this point in time, Mr. Figueroa is, takes care of other art, artworks and art functions throughout the committee, so having somebody to be able to take minutes during the meetings, help do scheduling, help guide through procurement, so it's administrative system basically for the arts committee and lines on, but right now it's me.
Mr. Robert.
Chairman, commissioners, and also Gina Elum in the past has helped, and she's worked with all pretty close, and Bill Wayley, when they were doing the photographs, I know, and I shouldn't be speaking for Gina, I know she kind of wants, based on her work, I know she doesn't, she could do it either, so we would have to be internally figure out which of the staff would provide that support that Richard and Gina provided in the past.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, this committee has nine members, am I correct? Six appointees, one from the courts, I mean, how many members do we have? I'm not clear.
I have to look at my meetings, it told me, the original, we requested, we had some additional interest in the committee, and we came to the commission to get some additional numbers, which we did. Originally, it was just six members from the public at large. Currently, if you include Mr. Wayley's eligibility, Deborah Bealobos, Paul, Michelle Barre, Susan Porter, Peter Rose.
Plus the county.
Yes, the county's, the commissioner, the district court.
So nine.
So nine.
Okay, so it sounds like we can ask to bring it back for who everybody wants to appoint, if they want to keep the same numbers. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, if there's a motion in order, I'll make a motion that the new committee arts chair is Chairman Fambro.
The agenda I asked that it be Mr. Figueroa.
I'm not sure, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, then I withdraw my motion, and I make a motion that Paul Figueroa be appointed as the Art and Artifacts Committee Chair.
Second. Yeah, motion in the second to appoint Mr. Figueroa as the arts committee chair. Court Call Roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagels.
Yes.
Chairman Fambro.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, to get clarification, I would like to see this back on the agenda with the county manager giving a designate, as is in the resolution, and a vote on me as an alternate. I believe last time, Chairman did give me permission to go attend that meeting, so I want to just make sure we have the right amount of people on board and those who want to serve.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item B, discussion consideration and decision regarding the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three ICIP plan, this will be presented by Ms. Bahamio and Lula, Ms. Montoya Grant's initial.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Ms. Montoya sends her apologies, Ms. Montoya, she's observed, has been ill, and so she's under doctor's order to remain home, so I'm gonna do my best to pinch it for her today. The ICIP plan is due to DFA, Department of Finance Administration, September first. Ms. Montoya came up with the plan, it's in your packet, she also did hold a public meeting, nobody from the public attended, it was advertised, attached, seen news. So before you, we have the plan for two thousand nineteen through twenty-three. We've also consulted with Mr. Pacheco, Public Works Superintendent, on the roads that you see within the plan, and, and so what we're looking for is to approve the plan this morning.
Mr. Chairman, these arts, by they prioritize in order of importance, how they need to get done?
The first five are, the first, actually, the first ten are prioritized in what needs to get done in two thousand nineteen. Camino del Medio, the historic end courthouse that we just heard about, the veteran cemetery, most portable as a bridge, Blueberry Hill Road is starting to fail, it needs to be addressed within two thousand nineteen, in twenty nineteen. The Ag Center is still a high priority for the county, and the operations facility, it looks like, which Leonzo will speak to more in his report, is by the end of next week, let Leonzo speak more to it, the property on Hergner is going to get transferred fully over to the county, which will then go for, going.
To the town?
To the town for the housing, so we need to start building, link that building, that's why, that's a priority. And then the Brachitos neighborhood, wanting that sewer extension for their wastewater, and then the western half of C one ten is very bad, it's been, it's a cemetery, and then as we heard from Chief Judge McElroy on their needs for the building next door, that's what number ten is. But those, those are what we see that we'll get, we're gonna try to work on next year, and so the rest of it's not really also prioritized. The other thing that we did include in here that wasn't on there last year is clerk's record retention, they post something to change that title, but Ms. Martinez has some money, we want to build a building next door for the voting machines to get those out of, out of the old artillery, artillery properties, so we're gonna soon be talking to an architect on that, and so that's a new item that got, that came on the list, because that's happening sooner than later.
While we're on the, on a new, or a desperate need of new software, correct?
Yes.
Software for, Mr. Chairman, for running her office, the, not the elections, not the election. Mr. Chairman, if she can talk more about that? I didn't mean to put her on the spot.
It's something that I've had in place for four years, and it just gets tied up in legal, and then we switch attorneys, and then it gets tied up in legal, and then we switch IT, and then it gets tied up in IT, so really, it's, I have the money for it, it's just a matter of having the contract signed and IT being on board.
Okay, do I support that project?
Something that doesn't show up on the list, this, because it's something that.
Okay.
There's a chance to get done, that's already funded, and we're not sure on the voting machines, how much that building's gonna cost us, so that's kind of where it's showing up in this.
So what are we gonna put on the agenda for approval, Mr. Chairman?
Soon, I hope. Mr. Chairman, Court Roll. And then I'll go to Commissioner O'Donnell.
Are we talking about the Tiger software? Is that what we're talking about? I'm kind of confused. Is that, if that is the case, then I think we just need a couple correspondence back from Tiger designers today. It has been a ongoing issue, and I do apologize to the clerk, but about a year ago, we decided it's going forward, I mean, and so I can't say where it was over the last eight months, but it will come soon, we'll get it back in track.
Cool, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
On the Brachitos sewer extension, is that something we will do?
It's, it's something that we need to support to try to find funding, because all of those citizens are county residents, but it's gonna be the Town of Taos extending their sewer line to them, or some other action, which would be very expensive, but all those wells are infiltrated, and it need, I asked that it remain on this, I made that presentation to us about eighteen months ago, and they're active themselves, trying to find funding for it, and trying to find a solution, but it's, it's in the bad.
Mr. Chairman, is, has the town, it's not in the Town of Taos area?
No, it's just outside corporate.
So it's, and it's not in the DWI district, uh?
No, done it.
So is it possible maybe to work with either entity? Well, I don't think they want to be incorporated in the Town of Taos, so I was wondering if maybe it would be possible to work with the DWI to expand.
I'd love that, and they, they just need a glimmer of hope that there's something being done on the project, because they're, they're.
I would like to request, Mr. Chairman, that we work with the DWI, as long as I'm on board with the DWI, maybe some sort of collaborative meeting between the two boards?
Dennis. Becky Bottas will give you all the information.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to get Valdez right on here, and if that's the case, that we can put in projects that we support, I'd like to add Rio Grande Gorge Bridge Visitor Center added to that, to this list. And there, with that in mind, I have a couple of questions. Is it necessary to have the Taos County Sheriff's Department vehicles on here in the ICIP?
If they go and ask for money from the legislature, that's not.
It has, okay, and then what about the fire stations? Don't we have our loan money to build these stations?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, yes, we do, but we would certainly welcome any, capital money if they give it to us, so. These are the objects that are identified by Chief Corb, are the most pressing, and so we did want to make sure they were on our ICIP list too, in case we did need an extra fifty or a hundred thousand, we need that request.
If the, if the fire grant program is, is returned to the fire fund by legislative action, then it would have to be on here for us to, to get the hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grants that are available.
Right, well, I would still like to approve Valdez Road in Piñasco, and also somehow put in the Rio Grande Gorge Bridge Visitor's Center.
Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, Valdez Road was here, but it inadvertently fell off again. Speak to why it came off, but I know the direction was to leave it on. I mean, you've had a lot of conversations on Valdez Road, so we'll put that back in here. It must have been an inadvertent thing that it came off, and the Grande Gorge Bridge, so we can also add that, too.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner O'Donnell. Uh, the Tom Holder Bridge, I'm glad it was here. If you could speak a little bit to that, I know that I see it in basically the same condition as the Los Cortez Bridge. You're probably more aware of the condition of it than I am. If you can talk a little bit about that.
Chairman, Commissioners, who's on the bill?
Tom Holder Bridge is actually a very sound bridge. It's just the angle that it sits is totally wrong. Other than that, to improve that bridge, we have to literally pick it up, tweak it, and put it back down. It's actually one of those best bridges we have on.
If we could, Mr. Chairman, amend that listing as Los Cortez Bridge and Tom Holder Road, so that it includes the road as well. I recognize that it's the bottom of the list, but.
Tom Holder Bridge, ten road?
Yeah, to the, they're the same.
Which item is that?
It's 299, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, include them both as one.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, straight getting rid of that little jog in the road, and then the intersection will be a DOT project on 240. And that will have to coincide with that.
Right. And, and Mr. Chairman, one, one more question with regards to the Plailla Bridge. What ever came of that?
We're still looking into it, if it's a county bridge or if it's a state bridge. So we don't have no definitive answer. DOT told me that it wasn't a county bridge, and it was theirs. It's one of those things that we probably need to clarify with the department secretary and the deputy secretary, once and for all, if it's our bridge or not.
Is it still on the North of the, the RPO?
Yes, sir, it's still, it's still on the bridge, that didn't come off at the last meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if, you know, we don't know the status, the ownership of it, but if we can still include it in here. I believe it was still in here last year.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's still, it's, it's on the second page. It's, uh, it's a near fiscal year 2020, and it's number two of priority list for 2020.
Oh, okay, I see. We know that the Rio Grande Bridge, is that what it's called?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, is John Dunn our bridge, or is that a highway state front?
It's our bridge.
It's our bridge.
There's two bridges, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner O'Donnell, there's the John Dunn Bridge, and there's a bridge just before the John Dunn Bridge. That's what we're discussing, that's our bridge, right before you get to the one that crosses the Rio Grande.
Oh, so it's not the big John Dunn?
It's not the big John Dunn Bridge, it's the little one.
The, the, the one listed here is the big John Dunn Bridge.
I apologize for that. But the other one is still issued as well.
Right.
So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I would really like to see a ranking of these bridges as far as their need for repair. And there is infrastructure possible grant, deadline's November 2nd. And I'm just wondering if we could apply for that and bundle all these bridges. The minimum project, it has to total 5 million.
Yeah.
And, you know, they do ask if it's on DOT's list, which I know the Plailla Bridge is. Don't know about these other bridges, but we have a ranking of bridges. We would definitely reach that minimum grant of 5 million, and could include the John Dunn, the Plailla Bridge. And it, it is due November 2nd, it is a rather complicated application. I, we have to get direction if we could bundle a number of bridges to repair. But I think you're demonstrating a safety need, and that's why we need to rank these bridges according to their condition. And I, I do think Mr. Bahamio has the, it's in the total register, he has the, you know, what you have to do to, to the application. But I think maybe we should give a shot. It, it does, you can be, local governments can apply for these projects. So I, I think it's worth at least looking into to see if we might be able to get some funding.
Mr. Chairman.
It is on our, these are all on our, it does ask if it's on the ICIP list, so.
Mr. Chairman, I agree, and I know that with regards to those two bridges in the Royal Ondo, John Dunn Bridge, the large bridge, and the small bridge is definitely in need of, of improvement. The large bridge crossing the Rio Grande in the, in the Royal Ondo is owned by the county, correct?
Correct.
And so is the, the small bridge before that one on here?
It's not on here, but we were trying to see if we could do it in-house, and that one I know is a priority for Ramona to, to work on as soon as possible.
But if we're going to take up the suggestion from Commissioner O'Donnell, I guess it would have to be on here if it was going to be included in that grant. If you feel like you have other funds that would handle it, then it might not be necessary, but.
Doesn't have to have it on. Oh, I thought that was one of the requirements that Commissioner O'Donnell, he does have to have it on. Right.
So we should put it on?
Okay, so if we would add that, that bridge is, I don't know what we would call it. Worst bridge in town? Second worst.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, staying the same, we're just adding the item on?
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, in this particular application, I'll ask if you can have the projects done in 18 months. So that's a real fast track, but, I mean, I, I think, I think we, we should at least give it a shot, but it's a rather complicated application. But I, I think we could bundle these, you know?
We'll look into it.
I think our bridges need to be prioritized.
And we're, last week when I met with Ramona and Deborah, we were trying to locate, DOT has given us their list of the worst bridges, which was Corlevas, was up there. So we're trying to find that list, we might have to get a new one from DOT, or it might have stated, and Mr. Archuleta was up, uh, items when he left. But, and we're trying to locate that list.
So I think I would entertain a motion that we make sure Valdez Road is on there and included, and the bridge just east of John Dunn Bridge would be added as well. And asking for the bridge list, and I think is not actually a voting point, but staff has written it down, so that will, will be a task order for our engineers or someone.
And, Mr. Chairman, the Rio Grande Gorge Bridge Visitor's Center.
Also, Tom Holder, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the, the change to Tom Holder to include Roden Bridge.
And, um, did you want that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman? So move, Mr. Chairman.
Basically, I have a motion.
Second.
And it's second to approve the 2019-2023 ICIP with the additions as stated prior to the motion.
Further discussion? Mr. Chairman, um, real quick, if we can follow up with the suggestion on the wastewater idea for the Ranchitos area. Um, the, the town of Taos and the EOLIs are currently working on a plan to take on more areas south of Ranchitos as far as EOLI services is concerned.
We should start there and work down, and it would really be beneficial to those people.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, motion is second.
Court Call, rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Fabbio.
Yes, thank you.
Item C, Discussion, Consideration, and Decision Regarding Approval of Audit State Trial on Actual Reimbursement from Commissioner Bahamio, Deputy County Manager, to Attend the International City-City Manager Association Conference in the Center of Twenty-Up Texas, limited list.
This is October 21st through the 25th.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman. Make sure there aren't any hurricanes in the area.
Right.
Good, good point.
I have a motion.
Second.
And it's second to approve Audit State Trial on Actual Reimbursement from Commissioner Bahamio to Attend the International City-City Manager Association Conference in Center of Twenty-Up Texas.
Court Call, rule.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago.
Yes.
Chairman Fabbio.
Yes, because that means you're not going to have a form.
I'm going to make sure that we have a meeting on that day.
Uh, item 11, as County Manager reports to matters, this will be an update to the Commission on various items affecting Taos County by Mr. Corlevas, and then we will follow with a discussion, uh, who will represent the county on the stronger part.
Mr. Corlevas.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm just going to go through a list of some of the scheduled meetings I've had from our last commissioning into today, um, and try and elaborate on some of them, and standard questions and anything else, but I have a long list, so. Uh, we did have the Audit Enters Conference, and we'd like to mention it the last meeting, but it was the morning before our last meeting, so the auditors have come in, they've gone through audit process, and I did send out an email with their contact information, and I encourage any of the Commissioners to reach out to them with any concerns, issues they may have. Uh, we did attend, friends and myself, the LFC hearing up at Ski Valley two weeks ago. It was a very intriguing and interesting discussion. There was a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth with Tax and Rev Department, which I found most intriguing and interesting. There's still a lot of recording problems with Tax and Rev. We're not getting the data that we need to be able to prove, that we're not getting the money we think we're not getting, and that seemed to be a reoccurring theme from all the legislators at the table. Uh, there is a lot of discussion from both the municipal and county side about how to proceed with our attempts to get TRD to comply. And so I can't say much more, there's certainly a lot of discussion at the managers level, and I will bring more back to the Commission as we get further down the road, but it really basically is, the counties, local governments are fed up with the lack of transparency and the lack of data. And I know that in Taos Ski Valley's case, this came up as they were discussing the tin. It's a very isolated tin of Taos Ski Valley. We know Taos Ski Valley Inc. is basically writing all the checks for the contractors and the work being done, so they know a little bit more data than most tins would know, most communities, and they're not seeing the kind of returns that they would expect. So they're starting the process, writing the check over here, but the time they get down to what TRD is distributing, it's not what they anticipated it should be. So that says a lot, and we've all had concerns about the reclamation at the Chevron Line, whether or not those contractors are contributing, and it's really impossible to determine and to tell the Tax and Rev, we know we're getting shorted because we've not had it approved. We just have this felt feeling, and we're not alone. I just wanted to make that point, that statewide, I think every local government feels they're getting shorted from Tax and Rev. So that was what I found most intriguing in that LFC conversation. I think it's only getting more traction, and so we'll bring that back, that's not, last year, going to hear about it. And I would ask any of the Commissioners in any meeting you attend, if you hear that discussion, please contact me, let's talk about it, because it's probably important for us as we make a decision in the future.
Can I add another thing to that meeting? What I heard on the day that I was up there, I could swear they're going after U&amp;M Taos. I just got a feeling about the questions that they asked U&amp;M Taos on why they needed the two campuses and this stuff. Did you get that same feeling? I, you know, there was, there was talk in the last session about, um, there's too many branches out there, right? We got to defend ours, ours is doing super work here, and I'm not saying they're going after it, but the former chairman of that committee asked some questions of U&amp;M while I was there, that just led me to think that they're looking at ways of cutting, and that's not acceptable. I'll just throw that out. I, and I mean, based on, that it just seemed really pointed to me, the questions that they did ask. Sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, a follow-up on that, too, I did hear what you heard, I think, and also heard on encouraging U&amp;M Taos to rein tuition. Maybe we're kind of chastising them for not doing it sooner, and I think, I hear, I hear what you're saying, I kind of got that vibe a little bit, too.
Mr. Chair. My pleasure, guys, with pleasure of the Commission that you encouraged Mr. Corlevas to resume letter to the State Attorney, Mr. Keller, in regarding doing an audit on Tax and Rev for certain projects. I have been about what's going on with the reclamation project there, Chevron Mining, and we're not seeing the lump sum of some of those checks that should be invoiced here in the state, and they're getting sent out out of state and getting invoiced out of state, so. Uh, I, as one in the villages, capacity as mayor, I'm drafting a letter, I'll be sending it in a week. So if we can support Mr. Corlevas in sending the letter as well, we can maybe get some traction from Mr. Keller.
Pursue it, makes sense to have Mayor Calhoun and Mayor Veroni and Mayor, he's key guys.
King.
King.
I think it'd be beneficial for all of us, especially because of what we're, how diverse we are, and how we should have to spend much money to plan for all those projects, so. It's going to be big. Commissioner Blankenhart.
Yeah, thank you, I think it's a great suggestion. And then on the U&amp;M, uh, concerns, which I share, those two, those two, um, at different campuses, really, serve the community incredibly well. Maybe we could reach out to the new president? Uh, I know Chairman was maybe going to have lunch with him, I don't know if, if Leonzo's had any contact with Mr. Valdez, uh, just to give him a heads up, and.
And I will drop that letter, and I do appreciate that support, I agree, and it's important for us to continue to push the issues. So moving on, if there's no other questions about the LFC, a reminder that the Legislative Education Committee is here in Taos this week. They will be here Wednesday at U&amp;M Taos, so hopefully they can get a good look at, at South Campus, and as well as the downtown campus, and understand and appreciate that they both serve a very important role in our community, both campuses. Uh, I also was able to attend, along with Commissioner O'Donnell, a Kit Carson Electric Co-op Working Lunch that same week, it was on a Friday afternoon. It was a good discussion, it went pretty well, there was a lot of community leaders in the room, and I do applaud that Kit Carson for taking that initiative. Basically, the conversation was revolving around economic development, infrastructure, and how we all work and collaborate together. And so we will continue to attend those, and I think, um, it is a good idea that Kit Carson pushes it, and I appreciate that, that as a non-governmental entity, they have a little bit more flexibility, they're quicker to pivot, and they're able to do more quicker than a governmental agency. They also are pursuing the same idea that's been floated out there to, um, basically have a commission or a council, or, you know, a joint collaboration on economic development, where maybe many partners contribute, and we can therefore have a full-time staff that serves Taos County and all of the municipalities and all the entities within Taos County, so. I felt it was a, a good conversation, there was also some good discussion about Kit Carson and how they operate, and how their charges are kind of filtered down to each of the entities, and who are the big power users, so. It was a good conversation, and we'll continue to attend as invited. Um, we've had some progress on RTC, uh, we'll be bringing that up to the Commission more formally, probably in a future meeting, or the next meeting, or first meeting in October. Um, the next step for us is to put out an RFP to solicit the working side of the partnership. Uh, we have had some preliminary discussions with certain groups, but we want to make sure that procurement's followed, and that we have to dial our I's and cross our T's there, so. Um, when we do have the RFP complete and we are ready to. When we do have the RFP complete and we are ready to award, we'll also have an special item for the commission to update you on progress. We have also got CYFD reached out to us to keep moving forward with the architectural plans over there. So they are continuing moving forward, and they're actually fast-tracking this. I had a manager's affiliate conference call yesterday, and this discussion also came up with managers, and so we are planning a retreat in November where this will be a discussion, more specifically juvenile detention centers. About three to four counties across the state have shut down juvenile detention centers in this the last eight months. We are not alone in pursuing the idea. We may be alone in looking at RTC as an alternative to just shutting it down. So I think it's, it's great that we're still moving along, and we'll bring that back for more of an update to the commission soon. I had a great productive meeting with our clerk. Ms. Clerk and I had a conversation about a couple topics, and I appreciate that meeting, so we're moving forward on some of those things. Ibra being a big topic, and I appreciate the clerk stepping up to help us on such a busy task. We had a good meeting with the fire chief and our facilities director, Mark Otis, about fire district buildings maintenance. So we are incorporating all our fire district buildings into the maintenance of our facilities, and I think that's important. In the past, it wasn't really an official assignment to facilities, and we are making it an official assignment. We do have private ownership here at Taos County, and we appreciate that if it's ours and their names on it, we need to make it as good of a building as possible. If it's such an old and dilapidated building, we need to look at replacing it. And so besides the couple projects we have where we're replacing districts or building new buildings, we're also going to really be addressing our old existing buildings to improve efficiency, insulation. We've got to make sure that we're not losing money as a reoccurring cost on heating that's just going out the door, so to speak, so. I thought that was a very productive meeting, and I thank facilities for taking on more work. The ICIP was something we've been working on. As Mr. Armio mentioned, we had a September 1 deadline. We did ask for an extension, so they granted us an extension in September 15, so the changes that you asked for today will incorporate, and on our special meeting that I'm going to ask for on September 7, we'll have a resolution, and we'll officially adopt it that time. Speaking of special meeting, we do need to have a special meeting, as we have mentioned, for the assessors to be able to certify the tax rates. So we're asking for September 7, it's a Thursday, 9:00 a.m., to do that special meeting. So if there's no objection, we'll put that on the calendar, and we'll go out and plan for Thursday, the 7th, 9:00 a.m. to have that special meeting.
Thank you.
A Manya Senior Center, I just wanted to alert the commissioners to some issues that we have identified. Our risk manager, Jason Trujillo, and our fire chief have been making the rounds on all of our buildings, all our online buildings. They got to the A Manya Senior Center, and fire chief quickly identified there was no fire exits. There was not the proper fire exits and all the, I don't know, terminology, so to speak. So emergency lighting, emergency, the plan, everything. We're making the decision, now your consultant with Mike Trujillo, the senior program, to shut down the building for a short time. We can continue to serve the seniors doing homebound lunches, deliver their meals, but we feel very important that the county step up and do what is necessary to bring that building up to a safety code. We identified Chamisah also has the same issues. Chamisah will get addressed as soon as we finish with A Manya. We don't feel that that needs to be shut down. It does have a different layout and a different ability to get people out of the building, so I just wanted to alert the commissioners that, as things are being identified, we're doing our best to really attack it. Sometimes things, we're looking back on the history of this building, and we're trying to find out if we actually ever really received a certificate of occupancy. We can't find it, and so we're really concerned that there may not have been an official CO given to this building back in '07, so we're really, that's the reason we feel we need to shut it down as well as the fire concerns. So we're working on that, and that's a high priority right now.
What year did, was it built?
From the preliminary research we've done, I thank facilities for doing this. They went back in the clerk's office, they went back to minutes from '05, '06, and '07. It looks like it was pretty much completed in '07, but we can't find through immediate minutes any acceptance of the building or CO or anything like that, so it's pretty concerning to us.
As I remember, yeah, it's. They fired him, wasn't it?
He may have started the process. I think there's some indication that when they started, in '05, I saw it being somewhere under, but it's a lot more research we've got to do, and we're still working on that. Last Friday, the county was invited to the ribbon cutting at the airport. I attended on behalf of the chairman, gave a very brief, even though I was probably the most brief presenter of all Taos County's did, take my one quote and put it in there, it seemed like, but it was a, it was a good ceremony. It was a lot of people, a lot of past leaders from the town that came together to celebrate the 30-year, the making project, so I know that there's still some outstanding issues with that, but it was, I think, a very important ribbon cutting, and it was a great opportunity to see something like that. As I understand it, it's open, we'll never get to get out there again, so to keep walking that, it's pretty long, this trip. It really is amazing to see for our community, so. It was also very interesting to hear the director of the FAA, Mr. Michael Wirth, talk about this being one of the most gratifying projects he's ever done in his career. May not be the biggest, may not be the most expensive, but to him, it was one of the most gratifying, and he really felt that the collaboration at the end was great, and he was very thankful to the pueblo for them, working with everybody and coming around, so. On the side note, I actually got to go up with councilman Stagg from Taos Ski Valley, fly over the gorge. May have been a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for me, so I appreciated that.
Why, I do deserve it.
But I wasn't, I wasn't really interested in that, and I did have a lot of nerves, let's just say. I was probably shaking as much as the plane, but it was pretty awesome, so.
So we're seeing a few more there jets coming into the valley now.
It was officially open Friday. The FAA was the first, the chief was the first to be able to fly out of it, and he was in a, they said it was Air Force Two. I don't know if that's true. It was a small jet, and it was pretty cool. As they took off, they didn't even get halfway down that runway, and they're already there. So that kind of tells you how long that runway is and how much room they have to.
Much, because it's longer.
So. And also I had the opportunity to have a good discussion with Secretary Church and Deputy Secretary Wuhan, and as friend to you, too, we did write a letter, official letter. I also want to thank Commissioner Thankinorn for talking to Representative Gonzalez, requesting the deed to the Herdner property. They have agreed. They don't want that property. They're not looking for any additional compensation for it, and they will work on this week to getting us that. They will deed it to the county, based on the original agreement we had in the 80s. They felt it was the cleanest way and quickest way to deed it to the county, and then we can then work with the town to deed it over. So we're talking about the three acres on Herdner that we got from the state back in the 80s, where our fleet building is now. Three acres used to belong to DOT. We purchased it with, for a $50,000 price tag over the 80s at $5,000 a year for 10 years. At the end of the deal, we never had a deed recorded, and it looks like either DOT never conveyed it to us or if they conveyed it to us, we never recorded it, but there's no chain or title out there, so they are now agreeing to tag it over to us, and that's great news, so we can continue forward with our plan with the town of Taos and Forte County. So I definitely want to thank DOT for working with us on that. I mentioned my manager's conference call yesterday. We are planning a retreat early November. We will be meeting to go over a lot of discussion topics, TRD being a big one. We talked a lot about that yesterday in the manager's conference call. We talked about detention. We talked about some of the rules that have changed as of July 1 on sentencing and release, and so I'm looking forward to that retreat to bring those discussions back to the board. We had a meeting of staff yesterday in our union as we're moving forward with our personnel policies and procedures, and I think that was a productive meeting. We're going to follow up with them again in the next week or so. We've sent out the policies and procedures for our department heads and elected officials, office officials, to kind of review, and we need to move forward with that, so you'll see us bringing that forward in the next few meetings. We'll give it to you for discussion and observation on the 29th, on the 19th, and then we'll go from there. It is a complicated procedure because we will need to repeal the existing ordinance and replace it with what we're going to call a merit ordinance. It's a lot more efficient, it's smaller. Instead of adopting the entire policy and procedures by ordinance, we adopt the rules to be able to accept policy and procedures. So instead of the entire document, we can have about a four-page document by ordinance. The personnel policy and procedure will be adopted by resolution, and work rules will be done by manager's request. They won't give it to you for motions that get passed. So it's critical we get all this done at the good timing, because if we repeal what's existing and don't replace it, we will be in a void. And so this is something we've been working on for almost two years now, and it's exciting because it's very important to future the county and our employees. Just a quick update on an issue that Commissioner O'Donnell brought to us on the Governor's Commission on Disability. I was able to find a brief talk to Mr. Daniel Fernandez from the Governor's Commission on Disability. That issue is probably beyond the scope and ability for the county to help. However, it's an issue that I certainly have close to the heart, and as many of you know, my brother was handicapped, and he passed away a few years ago. A contractor from the Espinal Valley area, a close friend of the family, donated a good lump sum of money to our church to be able to do things like this in behalf, on his name, in behalf of him. And so the biggest issue was that house is sold beyond, it's not out to code. And the request from the family was in the bathroom, and they were going to actually extend money for a bathroom and a laundry room. It was a very exciting program until we got to see the home and realized there's so much preliminary work that needs to be done before the Governor's Commission will give the money. So at this point, personally, I'm kind of pursuing the opportunity of maybe finding a local electrical contractor. That's the biggest step. If we could bring that home up to code, then everything else can kind of fall in line, so. Just the update, there's not much the county can do. We really can't help at this point in its application, but there's still help that we can do as a body. And we've been doing a lot of preliminary work on a retreat with our department heads as a follow-up to the retreat we did with the commission. Had some meetings with Mr. Cortovat from the commissioner group. He's bringing in another consultant to work with us, and so that we hope to shoot for the November timeframe to have an off-site retreat here within the county limits, but off-site for department hits, and we'd have a specific type of commissioning to love to come meet with us in the department hits. And staff, any questions at this time? Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What was the status of that AG Tech grant? Did we get it?
AG Tech grant?
That you're a general tech grant that you said we were going to apply for?
I have follow-up on that, Commissioner, and I can't give you an answer at this time.
Okay. If you could follow up, we got it or not? I was curious. Could you please also follow up on when the conveyor belt for the, our Copper Hill free-use material? You start hauling materials when that conveyor belt will be put on? So I understand some talk about renting a crusher is fell through, but we can't use that yard until we get the conveyor belt put on that machine? So if you could follow up when, when we could get that going so we could start pulling material from that?
Let Mr. Pacheco speak on that.
Commissioner, as far as the conveyor belts concerned, it's on Fleet's desk right now. It's been there for a while. We're just waiting for him to make the move. We can pull material out of that pit. The screening plant is just basically to make base course material. But we can pull pit run out of there as it is right now.
Without any equipped other crusher or anything like that?
Without anything, as it is right now, we can pull pit run out of there, and that's pretty much all of it. But if we get that screening plant up there, then he can start making base course material.
And then I believe they did tell us we could use their rock, the rock pile, so if we could get confirmation?
I haven't gotten a final on that. I was told not to touch the rock until Mr. Chavez allows us to.
All right. If you could, yeah, follow up on that. All right, thank you. I'd like to see solid waste. There is a grant for illegal dumping, and if it's possible, Mr. Armio, let's look that photo up. And this is a grant that's due on Friday, and Mr. Martinez said he was going to work on it, but I'm wondering if you might be able to check with him to see if he might need some assistance? It is $45,000 to $100,000.
Was it about a consent agenda?
It.
Different grant?
It's a different grant, and it allows for cleanup of private areas, and this right here is a private area. We came across this when we were touring pipeline project, and this area has not been cleaned up because it is on private land, but this grant talks about how to help with citations, you know, how to create a plan, but it's private land, BLM land, forest land, and it would be a huge amount. It would really help solid waste and their activities, so if you could talk to Mr. Martinez to see if he needs any assistance in getting that grant done by this Friday. I don't know, he did say he was going to work on it, but I don't know the status. That, I think it would be important if we at least applied, because this would help solve these kind of particular problems that we are experiencing. Also, if you could check when the Chamisah Senior Center will get broadband? I'm sure it could be used up there. And also, has the Top of the World RFP gone out?
It'll go out this week, and we'll do a 10-day RFP, we'll have that close as possible, be quick.
Very good.
It's scheduled to go out this week.
The Chevron, there was a contract we saw across our desk related to getting on the table with Chevron, and I'd like to, at some point, if you could give us an update if we're going to proceed with that or not. If we don't, then we won't be at the table. So if you could just give us an update on that, where we stand, and, you know, if we agree or not agree to move forward. So that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moving on to item B, discussion, decision, who will represent the county for stronger part?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, after our presentation at the last meeting, you asked for us to bring this back to try and determine who would represent the county and at what level we'd like to participate. So at this point, that's why I brought this up. I would like a decision from the commissioners. I would suggest, though, that if we do have a representative from the board, that we also have a staff member attend. I think it's vital that staff be alerted to what's going on in these commissioners, these meetings where commissioners are being representing us. If we don't always get all the information back, he has a super busy schedule, so I understand.
I'd like to hear your recommendation of the staff member.
Well, in the short term, I would like to attend the first couple, and then I would be able to identify, I think, from then where we would delegate that down to.
Do you want to make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Any other decisions? Oh, I know.
I'll make that motion, because, Mr. Chairman, I really do not want to.
Okay.
You know.
The motion isn't not that you don't want to, the motion is that you want Mr. Cortovat to be our representative.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, second, third, call roll.
Mr. Armado?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenham?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gago?
No, I wish Candace would be the representative.
Yes.
Chairman Fondo?
Yes, there's one that she didn't want to be on. Okay, item C, discussion, consideration regarding recycling in Town Casa. I asked Mr. Cortovat to put this on at the landfill board meeting this last Thursday. We were asking, so was the village of Red River, if they were going to participate in assistance to the town to keep the recycling center open. They, Red River, has said no, they would not, so it's down to us. Everyone else has turned them down. We really, we don't want to make a motion, but in our defense, we've never been told an exact dollar amount that was requested from us. There was many figures that were thrown out there, but because of not getting the outside support for recycling. the recycling center will start cutting back after their next regular council meeting on what recyclables they can take, and they'll start cutting hours, and most likely it will go away very soon.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think from the perspective of the county, we do our best recycling as already. We do what we can to do our own. We don't utilize the center a lot. We do take some stuff there, especially facilities, these complex. It is difficult to confirm without numbers. And as the chairman indicated too, we haven't really gotten any hard solid numbers. When they did present to this board back a few months ago, you recall Commissioner Duncan Horn asking for other potential cost-saving measures, and we haven't really gotten that back from either ways that they might be able to cut expenses in order to be sustainable. So it is hard for us to commit not knowing what we're committing to. And we don't have a lot of excess ourselves just to throw at the problem. We all agree that recycling is important, and we'll continue to put the efforts in that we put in on our end to recycle.
So I just wanted to let you know that the, what the update was at the meeting. If there's something concrete given to us, I'll certainly put on the agenda for a vote with this commission. Okay?
All right, thank you, Mr. Cortez.
One more thing, Commissioner, remind all the commissioners, this Friday is our EAP picnic. You all are invited. We hope you can come join us, have some fun. I believe we're gonna try to clear the dump tanks, so I'll probably get nice and wet. Hopefully we have a great time. You guys can join us.
Okay, commissioners, get on the, in the dump tank as well?
It'd be great if the commissioners would like to get in the dump tank.
Hundred watts?
I can throw better than that, no. I throw better than this, my mom.
Bring a wax, what do you call it?
I've seen you play softball, I don't know.
Are you gonna get wet?
Your hair.
Okay.
In the past, we've used that as a fun, crazy mechanism for ECPs.
Yeah, but if my hair doesn't mess up, it gets quicker.
I have 12 commissioners reports and matters tomorrow, not tomorrow, Thursday. I will be at the Parker lawsuit mediation seven of part three. I'll be stuck in Irwin and Santa Fe all day, nothing to report. And I attended RTV consolidation meeting, special meeting. They want, there's a proposal to consolidate the Blue Bus and Santa Fe Trails. I really didn't have a good feeling. I got the report. It's about 260 pages. The recommendation from the consultants, I'll share that. I'm asking for an electronic copy, because I'm not gonna make that many copies. That's just senseless waste of paper. So I'll try to get you guys a electronic copy of the consolidation report. If you would like one, just contact Mr. Adameo and Mr. Cortez, and they'll let me know, and I'll get that sent to you.
Is Santa Fe Trails owned by, same with government?
Yeah, well, it's lodger's tax. It's a dedicated, I don't think it's a quarter cent, I think it's an eighth cent, and it's legislative.
So they're wanting to merge both entities, and what would it do to the constituents?
The tax, Santa Fe, city of Santa Fe would save tax money and capacity. And over the four states, the tax that is current is projected to more than double.
Will it cost the other entities more money, huh?
No, it'll just cost the voters more money. But no, but it would mean for a better reserve balance and more stability for the RTV. That's the good side of it, but there's a lot of stuff. I'll show you the graphs and stuff. But there's, they're having public meetings this week in Santa Fe, and there was a report in the general, I understand. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that's out there, and I got the report a few minutes ago. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I've attended board meetings for Vidal's Ranches. As you know, our offices are on the road out to the hot springs and down. There continues to be, and it appears like it's almost the same individuals that are dumping quite a bit of branches and carcasses and other stuff out in that area. There's also a lot of shooting guns that goes on at all hours of the day. And so I know our sheriff has been asked about this, and I know our solid waste folks have been worried about it. But if there was a way to actually go out there and enforce...
Mr. Martinez has been kind of aggressive. He might purchase some surveillance, work there, catch...
It happens on a daily basis, especially now in the summertime. There was an elk carcass out there about a week and a half ago. Someone, I'm sure, killed it illegally and dumped most of it there. Even what appears to have...
Such a beautiful part of the county.
The skeleton of a mountain lion. So something needs to be done.
I'll bring that up at the next landfill meeting and ask for the support. And I know that Ray Brad gets in the middle of that support if he is successful.
So what are we doing in terms of a camera or something at our community center? Is that gonna happen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Frodes is working, giving hopes for cameras for the community center, and we would make sure that a couple of them are facing the road on the old end of the lead as well. Mr. Frodes is working on a few projects at the Hana Commando Community Center right now. That is one of the priorities.
Let's get Mark Ortega. He's out there all the time. Let's get him to start watching for that as well.
Mark, too.
He's with the emergency management from Key Town.
Mr. Chairman, going back to new business, I'd like to put on a new business discussion of partnering with the remaining agencies for gas services. And also, I would also like to put on for discussion whether we want to become an economic development partner. I believe it was gonna be on the town's agenda, but I guess the first step in hiring an economic development director would be that we have buy-in, similar to the contract we just approved, JPA for E911. Kind of a similar makeup where each would agree to put in a certain amount for an economic development director. So I'd like to at least start those discussions at the IGC meeting, because we are failing to get a quorum. It was suggested that perhaps we spend most of our attention on economic development. So that's in the talking stage, and that would go in line with if we did hire someone, there'd be, everybody would pay a percentage for one person. And there was some talk that perhaps the House Community Foundation would, could possibly be the fiscal agent. Again, it's, you know, it's very similar to what we just passed, the idea of relating to the JPA for E911. So I'd like to get those on there, and if possible, to discuss again a Chevron contract. And then under my announcements, it's time to do inspection of the detention centers. So we're not doing it in December, doing it individually. So if you need the checklist form, and if you can set some time up individually to go take a look at the jail, you know, let's get that done before the end of the year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Gagos, the new business is considered a feature commission. I asked the commission to consider discussing and reviewing the contract of the hospital, this critical care concept. I've kind of felt the effect to family member going in three times for the same condition, being that they went in for three days, got discharged, came back four days later, got discharged after three days, got discharged again, is now out of the hospital as of yesterday, and fully processed, now they're ready to do operation. Or it's gonna be something that they're gonna have to transfer him out. So I really have been opposed to this since the beginning. I'm not content with the operations that have been there. And maybe it took family to have me speak out, but I think we really need to consider this, and maybe look at how this contract can be changed, or look for other services with a different... Maybe you and then we're saying this to somebody else. But I'm wanting to get the commission to consider having some more further discussion on this.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner?
I totally agree with Commissioner Gago's on that idea that we need to bring it back to the table.
Okay.
Thank you. Good idea. All right, hearing no other reports and announcements, we'll move to item 14, which is an executive session. This is a discussion on the status of CV 2014-00241, Carmen Royale versus Taos County at all. These matters may be discussed in executive session under Open Meetings Act exemption 10-15-1H7, which allows for discussion of pending or threatening litigation. Ms. Robinson, is it your recommendation that this board of county commissioners go into executive session at this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Strictly. Motion in a second to go into executive session regarding CV 2014-00241, Carmen Royale versus Taos County at all, under the exemption 10-15-1H7. Third couple roll.
Mr. Ramada?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Thunberg?
Yes, and my understanding is Francis and Anna and Valerie, this would be about five to 10 minutes.
Do you want a motion?
Yes.
Motion to come back into session for executive?
Strictly that motion. I have a motion in a sentence to come back into open session. Third couple roll.
Mr. Ramada?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Yes.
Chair Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Thunberg?
Yes. Ms. Robinson, could you give me a report regarding the executive session? I'd be staying within the confines of the agenda items.
Yes, since we could board that in executive session pursuant to open meetings exemption 10-15-1H7 allowing for discussion of pending or threatening litigation in the case of CV 2014-00241, Carmen Royale versus Taos County at all. This is the only matter discussed, and the action was taken.
Motion from the commissioners to...
Motion to accept.
Ms. Robinson's group.
Motion to accept.
Second, and third couple roll.
Mr. Ramada?
Yes.
Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Mr. Blackenhorn?
Here.
Vice Chair Gagos?
Yes.
Chairman Thunberg?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is item 15 adjourned.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. I'll say aye, and then I'll... All right, thank you all.